Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for another beautiful day of life for the millions of us. Father, we've gone to you with heavy hearts. In the last few days, young men were lost to the plague. Others in our community, Lord, who've lost love. Why don't we just hold them up to you, Lord, and ask you to be with them and strengthen them? Go with us now as we conduct the city's business. Forgive us where we fail you. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the September 5th Winkell City Council meeting. Chris, he may have come in a little late. He's run into not being able to get here. Well, I don't think he's at the City Council meeting. He's got a meeting, couldn't get out of there or something.
You got a cut of water line?
Water line. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes for all of 20 to 29, 10 council meetings. If anybody's got any questions, come in so we'll get those minutes written. We need to ask for a motion to approve. A motion. Jimmy, can you say all in favor? All right, the next item on the agenda is cemetery board resignation appointment. We've got Kenneth Gilman sent a letter asking for us to accept the letter. A letter of notification that resigned from the Winkell City Cemetery Board. I think that immediately. I don't think we have to act on taking that, actually accepting the resignation. Is anybody here in the cemetery board? We got anybody with a recommendation?
Our recommendation is Sherri.
Sherri?
Sherri.
Sherri Corbin. Cemetery Board is looking to put Sherri Corbin. She's already, they've contacted and she's willing to serve in that. Ask if I can get a motion to appoint her in his place. All in favor? Next item on the agenda is council meeting date changes. I can remember last year when we had, I had a son play in it. Chris had one play in it. And Anthony's a granddad and he's got one play in it. Looks like just these two ones are going to need to change. September the 17th and October the 15th. He's asking if we could get on this time of those two more.
That's asking for that.
September 17th, we'll move it to the 19th and October 15th, move it to the 17th. If nobody's got a problem with that, I need to ask the council if we can move those two dates. Those two council meeting dates. Anybody have a motion? All in favor? I want your calendar down. Change that. Two meeting dates. Todd was out. This next item on the agenda is the fuel bids. Flash tank at the city shop. Todd missed the meeting. What was the question that we had on that? Fuel bids usually goes out to be in effect October, the 1st of October. Y'all had some kind of, I guess turn this over to Rusty or Todd and let y'all handle the discussion. What we had on this? Y'all made a few comments of how you thought it needed to be, I think, last council meeting. The best, did we talk about getting surprises and do it? What was the final decision we made the other night? Did we make any kind of decision what we were going to do? The last council?
On the diesel?
On the fuel bids. You got a copy of Todd?
I looked over it. Mike made some, we made some modifications from the last one because of some issues that came about. We made a few modifications too. And I had a view.
Oh, is it? Y'all know what changes were made in that? Anthony, you got, has all y'all got a copy of it still?
Yeah.
The height of changes in the back of it. Kind of, just if you will. You take kind of handle the meeting on that. I don't know that I'll even bid, but I do have any say on.
It was a question, wasn't it, about?
Distance.
About the distance?
Yeah, this number two here, we did not agree with that. That half a mile. You remember what we talked about? We did not agree with that.
Have you looked over?
Yeah.
Probably have my head.
What's, you know, what's with the half a mile? Just feet on the back. Bud's down here. We told him it's in the back.
Mike's here. Mike has one thing put up. Of course, any of those changes, he and Rob, him and Rob had had a discussion and they, I know that they've talked with the reason. They've come to the conclusion as to why the reasoning was down here. At this particular fueling place, why they couldn't fuel there. But they, you know, one person, one company gets to bid. And if that company cuts you off the fuel in there, you can't go to the other company because they didn't get to bid. I mean, let Mike, I guess, kind of explain to him why they picked Coman.
Well, that was a misunderstanding. They put Todd in bid states.
No. Wasn't misunderstanding between me and midstates. My bid form, my bid form that I sent to them said, list one location open 24/7. List all other locations where you might fuel, where we might fuel. They filled that out. The only location they listed on the bid form that we accepted was one location. They let us fuel at other locations, but technically on the bid form, the bid that we accepted, they only had one location listed. And then they cut everything off except that one location, telling us that that was the only location in their bid. I didn't choose that location. They chose, yeah, they chose that location. So there was, maybe there was a misunderstanding, but they gave us that location. That's their chosen location, not one that we chose is the location that we wanted to use. They put the location in it. The bid form goes to them in blank and they fill it out. But because of that, Jimmy, because of the issue that created, we discussed the possibility of putting a geographic location limitation on at least one store that is open, not 24/7, but is open during normal business hours so that we can have a store where, for example, when Rob's fueling equipment, he doesn't have to trailer his equipment and haul it up to 129. He can actually just drive it to a store. And as long as it meets that geographic location, that was the whole reason behind putting that in there. Now, whether we want to do it a half a mile or a mile, that's completely up to the council to make that choice. Yes, that's, I don't have anything, but that's the reasoning behind that whole idea was, as I understand it, Rob, y'all, you know, if y'all are doing work with your side hog down here at King Cutter, y'all don't load it up on the trailer and take it down there. Winfield's small enough, y'all just drive it down there. And so to have to trailer all your equipment to take it somewhere to get fuel would be a little bit inconvenient. And so you wanted to try to list a location that was close enough that you could just drive your tractor to it rather than have to load it up on a trailer.
Correct.
Yeah. But a mile or a half a mile, either one, I mean, that's your call. It's real, doesn't matter, you know?
Councilor Hallmark mentioned something about a tank cadet. We've got Rob to come and speak today.
Okay.
But now, didn't we all agree that we didn't want it within a half a mile, just a half a mile?
Well, if it's a half a mile, we got three. We got three people. Okay. So they're considering Bud's down here.
Yeah.
They're considering his right over here. And is this max as many miles? Are they good? It ain't, it ain't maxes. It's the midstates stolen or whatever.
Midstates is totally, that's their.
Right, but I'm talking about it's not, it's not, it's their fuel. So in other words, midstates got Chevron over here and they got Chevron on the interstate and they got, they got the gas out of there.
Yes.
So Rob's.
And Max.
And Max. So it's not really a gas station. It's the midstate company, right? So if we do, as long as we get in reason with all three of them that cover, right? So we don't really have to even say a half a mile. We could say see the limit because if we do that, then you can go to any gas station you want to. I mean, any of the ones that gets to bid. If you can't?
No.
Why can't you?
Because that's what happened. Their bid last year, the bid form, Anthony, tells them to list locations.
Okay.
Okay?
But what if we're up on the interstate up there and he not going?
Yeah, he can go to that one up there, but what was, what happened is the only location they listed on their bid form last year was the interstate location. Now, we were fueling throughout a good period of time during that 12-month period. We were fueling at other locations, but then they did not, when I say they, midstates did not want us using those locations anymore and they wanted us to use only the 129 location. And when we questioned.
Just Max was taken off the list.
Okay. Max Minute Mark was taken off of this and that's what we were fueling. So the closest one was the one they took off. And when we questioned about it, they said, well, actually, we can do that because we've only listed one store.
So y'all want a half a mile to make sure they list within a half a mile?
Well, half a mile or a mile, I mean, you know, we got, I will say this. I do know this because of the issue, an issue dealing with the school bid that was in fact, the bids were open today. And the school bid, they're way by the weekend ahead of us. The school bids were open today. What I found out in discussing with people is the issue with Max has something to do with the lease between midstates and the people that run the convenience store. And the fuel, the pumps are not subject to the same lease terms and agreements that they are with the Chevrons and with the 129. That's the reason Max came out was something about the lease agreement between the folks that own it. So what I'm saying to you is based on what information I have, I'm not sure that if we listed it as a half a mile, I'm not sure midstates would have anybody within that geographic location because I don't think, even if we did that, I don't think they're going to give us Max Minute Mark because I think it has something to do with the lease agreement with the folks that are running Max Minute Mark. I think that's the problem. Okay? So if the Chevron up at first, up across from State Bank and Trust or across from Freewill Baptist Church is not within a half a mile, then I'm not sure they could, they would qualify because I don't think they would count Max because of something about the lease agreement with the folks that own it. They're operating the system.
So we don't need to do a half a mile.
Well, I'm just saying that if you do that, I'm thinking that I really.
That's where everything's covered.
I mean, that is the crow flies. As the crow flies, the Chevron up there may be within a half a mile. The Chevron up it. I don't know if you're doing, if you're doing a.
It'd be close.
If you're pinpointing the city hall and just doing a circle on a map, not following the road, if you're doing a circle on a map, it might be within a half a mile radius. I don't know.
It is a mile from the red light.
Yeah. Up the road.
On the, by road.
By road. I'm saying if you actually did pin dropped it from the city, as the crow flies.
Yeah.
It may be within a half a mile. I don't know.
We were doing as the backhoe travels.
As the backhoe travels. But it would make the mile. It just doesn't make the half mile.
Yes.
So, and for some reason, and I don't know the ins and outs of it, but for some reason, they don't want to use Max as one of their midstates stations. And they made that clear in the school bid. They don't want to use that as one of their stations. So it wasn't just an issue they had with us. That's something to do with the business. So, and I understand I didn't question you further about that, but I understand that, so.
Well, if I need to make a motion, I motion it. We change that to one mile instead of a half a mile. That way, all three get a chance to bid on. I need to make that form of motion. I make that motion.
Okay, let me ask, instead of doing it that way, let's do it this way. Jimmy, with that change, because we need to get this fuel bid approved, with that change, are you satisfied with the fuel bid? And if we change the half a mile to a mile, are you saying, make that change and then we'll adopt this fuel bid as the bid for this year that we can send out?
I'm fine with the bid.
Okay.
I just didn't like the half a mile.
So the motion would be to approve it with the change to a mile. So that way we can just send it out tomorrow.
I make that motion.
All right, can I get a second?
Yeah, I'll make a second.
All right, all in favor?
Now, Rusty, help me step on your toes, but the next thing we need to do is we need to decide when we're going to accept them. We've only got one council meeting. We've pretty much got to make them ready. Unless we set a special meeting, we got to make them ready at the next council meeting so the bid would be due.
Well, the next will be the 19th.
The 19th. Because we're going from the Tuesday to Thursday. So, September the 19th at 5:30.
Two weeks.
Yeah, September the 19th, night at 5:30.
Hand delivered.
Hand delivered. That's what it says in the bid specs. But with the date, we're going to put in September the 19th at 5:30. Okay?
They got to be turned in by the 19th.
No, they bring it that night.
On the night of the 19th.
So they need to have a representative here like open.
Well.
Whoever brings them.
We have asked that before because of the unique situation with you being the mayor. We want it done publicly.
I don't touch them.
Yeah. So, but now if, we have taken before, we've taken, they've brought them in and left them early.
Yeah.
But we've given them the option that they can bring them that night. And if they're satisfied with bringing them early, we're going to still count it. They don't like to be here to be counted.
No later than 5:30.
No later than 5:30 on that night. That way they can come in and don't have to do it. It's all in an open public setting and they don't have any complaints about it. So that's the reason we did that. But we will take them early if they come in today or two days early. We'll just take them and keep them sealed.
How good are Rusty?
Is that, y'all got that squared up, Todd? All right, well, the next item on the agenda is old bids. Has anybody got any old bids that?
I did, Mayor. Mr. Hinger gave, presented to you those deeds to the North Shore's old medical office in Wantage here. I don't, personally, I don't think we need to accept that.
Don't need to accept that.
Because of the, well, I know this one down here was built in the 50s and I know it's got asbestos in it and all of heat ducts, you know, and pipes and everything. It's been closed long and I'm sure it's got mold in it. And I don't know about the one at Gwin, I didn't even know we had the day-old one at Gwin.
I think they give it to C.D. Gwin.
No, he said it's us to the, both of them was given to us that night he was here.
I would have to go get the name, but I think it's just for.
It's just for.
It's just for this one.
We're looking.
All in favor of the bid. Y'all are. Charles, do you record?
We're in the, you know, question about the insurance.
Todd, do we need to vote on something like that before we accept it?
Well, let me say this. To have a proper conveyance in Alabama, it requires an acceptance before you can have a proper conveyance. Somebody, if somebody wants to dig me property, if I don't accept it, then it's not, you know, so technically acceptance is part of the conveyance process.
That's what I thought. Well, I don't want us to get down the road here and have to pay a bunch of fines or pay somebody to come in and take all that stuff out. So all we're getting is a liability. And I don't know what we use it for. I can't think of anything we could use it for.
Just backwards, firm with words.
I don't know, Greg's not here and I don't know how far Mike gets into the budget with this. But anytime you have property, and I know the building may not be valuable, but the property is, that boosts our assets up in the budget scale. I don't know, that'd be more of a question for Greg, I would think.
But you got to tear the building down to use the land. When you tear the building down, that's when you, they make you.
Yeah.
Hire the special people to come in and take that asbestos out and all that.
I'm just answering the plus side. I don't know about the negative side.
That's all right. I'm good with that.
Are you ready? Uh huh. Can you face it? Say your name. I made it again?
So what you're saying, Todd, is we've got to, the council's got to act on accepting that before they accept it?
No, I'm not necessarily saying that, Mayor. I'm saying that the city has to accept it for there to be a proper conveyance. If you're asking me if, in order for us to accept it is going to require action from the council or can the mayor just accept it? My answer to that is I don't know when it comes to property. I don't know whether that requires formal action on the city's behalf to accept that property or not. I can say this, in the past, when we have accepted roads that have been dedicated to us from a subdivision or whatever, we have taken council action to accept that dedicated property before it was technically accepted. So, as I said, it requires acceptance by the person receiving the property for the conveyance to be effective. But I don't know the answer to, does it require formal council action to accept? Because quite frankly, I've never been faced with a situation where, I haven't been faced with a situation where the city's been given some property that the city did not want, or some members did not want to accept it and there was an issue. So that's a question that I really can't answer, so I look at, but I just, I just don't know the answer to that.
Kim, are you okay with us tabling this to let Todd find out that information?
Yes, I'm okay.
Before we even ensure or anything.
Yeah.
She's already checked on it. Jimmy, have you got any other little things you wrote? I need, I just, I guess it's kind of a little bit, we need to, if y'all know of anybody, we need to try to, we're trying to seek a driver for the, bus, the meal bus down at the community center. Needs to be out above age 55 and there's some requirements and some of them, there's somebody that's based on income more than not that can, it's considered a part-time job, but they can't make so much money to be 55 years or older. But if they're disabled, they automatically meet the requirements regardless of the amount of income that they have if they've been classified as disabled for their industry and driving or whatever. If y'all see anybody that not be interested in taking that part-time job of driving that.
More than hours. Do you know Matt?
It'd be normally like eight thirty to 12:30, roughly four hours a day. If they have a special trip, they want to go Tuscaloosa to see Christmas lights or Florence to see. Then it may be more hours that, like all day. But on a normal schedule, probably a morning time.
Does he have to have CDU?
Sure.
CDU, if you have to have CDU.
I don't think a CDU's required.
That's a 14 passenger. I think it's, I don't think it requires CDU.
Anything above picking any.
I don't think this one does.
Like we're going, I had to talk to Rod to talk to him about the fuel thing. If he, if he needed to.
Yeah, yeah, he's going, he's going to talk about it.
Oh, you say him?
Yeah. I talked to Rod. Rob, tell them what you, you and I talked about today on the diesel fuel.
I checked on a diesel fuel tank at the shop. It's going to be about $3,800 for the tank and the pump and that's not counting electrical hookup. So I really don't want to go that route. Jimmy and I talked earlier. If we can't get a station here close to my shop to get diesel fuel, I would like to get a fuel tank to go and pick up, put an electric pump on it, where I could just fuel my tractors out of it, you know, and not have to drive to stations somewhere.
I think that's a great idea. I don't dream about to tell you.
That's what I stick to say.
They should have already had.
Even if it is a mile away, Rob, I think that's a good idea for you to have one in fuel tanks in the back of your, that you can, you know, bump it into a vehicle wherever it is and take that up there. I just think that's a great idea.
Me too.
I think it's a great idea. Having in a truck. Yeah.
Can we go ahead and pass that or do we get a tank? Rob, I think kind of wait and see how the bids turn out. I mean, I don't know if Rob wants one, I don't think that that, I don't think we have to take action to agree to, you know, purchase one.
Mayor, here's where I think that's significant. If the, the station, the station, they've only got to give us 124/7, okay? And that station, we know for them is going to be 129 for midstates. Now, B&amp;B is, I mean, Moore's might be different and price might be different, but at least one of them is going to be 129. So if you're, if there's an emergency or something going on with trees down or whatever, the city's got to get equipment out there, then you got to drag equipment up to 129 to fill it. And if you had that in a truck with a tank on it, you can drive a truck up there. I just think that's, for several reasons, I think that makes good sense, Rob. I think that's a good idea, very good idea. Because we faced some of those situations in the past, so.
Rob, you want one regardless or you going to wait till?
Well, I think it'd be a good idea to go ahead and get one of you.
I'm with me, I got two birds. My problem is keeping the tank full in a truck. Every time I get ready to use it, it's out. That's everybody. Can't get five gallon of it. Yeah, I mean, y'all go with. I think that's, I think it'd be a plus for doing that with it in purchase. I mean, for the truck, probably look at it. Probably, my guess would be one with a tank full, maybe $26, $27, $28. I'm going to make one, Rob might want to be look at, might want to be arrested and make one that's a two box with a fuel tank under it. You know, that might be better. I've got, I've got one of those that's pretty handy. Is there anything else, Rob? That was all you had was about the fuel. Kind of let, just keep the idea of a fuel tank out down at the city shop. Just put it on in a truck. I got a couple of. This right here. This right here, this Alabama Department of Public Health, this wellness, these flu shots, that what this is.
That's for the city employees.
For all the city employees, if you don't, you don't make all the, the pump everywhere.
Yes, David has a sign up sheet.
What this, this is, like the law.
He, he called and he wants to have a, you know, how they'll stand on the highway with signs about, you know, pro-life and not the law? And they're going to do it down there, close to your shop where that's big signs of about abortions and stuff like that. It's that Marcus McDonald in his room. And he just wanted to make sure it was okay if they did that.
Todd, you can answer that question. I mean, we don't have anything probably keeping anybody from doing that, it's not like the protests or nothing, but that's, it's going to be on state right away, where they're going to be at down there, Bob, right there in front of the park west between it and City Diner, right there where that billboard is. I don't see whether, we got, have we?
No, well, I thought we had, I thought we had an ordinance on record about assemblies above a certain, if a certain, above a certain number of people were assembled, they had to have permission for that assembly. I really thought we had an ordinance that addressed that, above a certain number of.
The council will tell them, we give them permission to hold this to me down there for about an hour, September the fourteenth, the day of the week. That'd be on Saturday.
That's my, mainly what he was asking was, did he have to have permission? Was it okay for him to do that? They wouldn't be blocking any roads, they'll just be standing, you know, on the, on the sides. I've seen them do it at Fayette, across from Walmart Cemetery, they'll be lined up, you know, down through there, and that's what he was talking about.
I personally, I don't have, I don't have any.
At, sometime in the past, we had, something was going on and some folks were threatening to come in and protest something and we passed some kind of ordinance or dealt with some, something about, if you were going to have an assembly and that assembly was expected to draw more than so many people, you had to get permission or get a license to have that assembly. Dustin, you remember that?
I do, but I'm not going to say what it was about.
I remember, I mean, it was sometime in the past, I mean, and it wasn't necessarily something we wanted, but it was a threat to come down here and do something and protest something and it was going to be so many people and.
That's a stamp from another town, didn't it?
Uh?
Didn't it stand in another town?
Yes, yes, and so, I thought we passed, thought we got in, got busy and passed something and there's a certain process they've got to go through if it's going to be above a.
And they can prove it, they don't care if that's an action, I can get you an answer on it tomorrow. And whatever, for focus.
Well, I mean, I, I think they're, they're, they're okay with it being done, but if we have to actually issue a license for them, then we need to go through that process because I think that there is an ordinance that deals with that specifically. I know we, we may have passed it, we dealt with that and we, I drafted one that dealt with that and, and we may have passed it, but, but we actually did deal with that. So, what I'm hearing the council say is, they're okay with it. So, maybe if they need, if they need a license because of this ordinance, we need to issue the license, you know, they're okay with the issue, but we may actually have to issue a license.
So, I need to wait until you tell me before I call him.
We just need to find the ordinance.
We need to find that ordinance and see if the license is required, because they've given permission, if we just need to physically give them the paperwork to have a valid license. Yes, that's what I'm saying, we just got to follow those steps.
FED just gives them a permit.
Okay.
I've seen that, that paper there.
We don't actually give permits, but I can look through the ordinance and see, because I'm.
Don't you remember that?
I do remember it. I don't know if we passed anything, but.
Okay. I, I, I'm getting old and I may, but maybe misremember as much as.
Misremembered.
You know, as you get older, you get.
Roger Clemens.
You tend to misremember stuff, you get older.
Oh, yeah. I guess if nobody else has any old business. We're still looking for a dump truck. Maybe they'll come up on there, but the one was six-oh-four, not those, you know, most people, six-oh-four, two thousand three to two thousand eight. Gas kind of stuff, neither woman, I've spent too much money on.
We just got rid of it.
That's a bad bid, them six-oh-four D's. I guess I've gotten it. If not, I'm going to ask for a, a motion to pay the bills, if I can get a motion to pay the bills, nobody got any questions on. I'll make the motion. All in favor? I need to ask for a motion to adjourn. So, all in favor?
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash forty-nine county news TV.